Stephanie, would you call us to order and do roll call, please?
Hey, Murray.
Present.
Mike Schwartz.
Here.
Rich Alashon.
Here.
Steve Bruce.
Here.
Darren Nasmun.
Present.
Michael Kuti.
Here.
And Scott Hopeless.
Here.
Thank you.
Very good. You'd look for an approval of tonight's agenda in front of you?
Certainly.
Thank you, Lorelei. Thank you, Lori. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Thank you. The agenda is approved. We turn it over to Dr. Luthen. We've got a construction update tonight.
Absolutely do. I want to thank everybody for coming here this evening through the lot of excitement that we've had since April 4th, plans and where we are, and here we are at the end of October. But shortly here, I'll turn it over to Kerry Gampford with Architects Alliance and ask him to kind of introduce the team and kind of go from there. But you know, just kind of lead into that through a lot of conversations in the community. I know you guys as a board, I've had a lot of conversations and folks and where we are and discussions that we've had of the naming and thanks to Amy and facilitating that process with regards to the naming of the second high school. A lot of interest. I think 1,212 names were submitted. So just a lot of excitement with that and the anticipation and the community of just a very positive mindset moving forward. So that's exciting. Trying to be very transparent, giving updates with the coffees monthly. The board meetings touch on kind of where we are in the process. So you know, even more so now that we've talked about being stronger together and you know, throughout the process, it's to me, it's revealed itself that it's you know, that core, that root of being stronger together has been more apparent. So looking forward to getting an update tonight. And for our folks, there's been a lot of different parts of it. There's been some speed bumps. There's going to be more speed bumps. That's part of the process. If it's worth doing, worth doing right. You're going to have challenges to overcome those and how we respond to those. So we're excited about where we are. And so with that, Kerry Gampford with Architects Alliance. Do you want to kind of introduce the team? Then Jason or Jason Kim? I'm not sure on the... Jason, what were you going to give us?
I'm going to pass this over here.
We'll let you do that. Kerry, why don't you kind of introduce folks? Kerry is Gampford with Architects Alliance. And I know we have our architects here at Nabholz Construction here. And I'll kind of let you guys give us an update from there. And any questions you have here, I make sure and fire away.
Just to kind of know who's on the team. Nabholz Construction. What's your name again?
Preston Moore. Preconstruction manager.
Michael Feinster. Senior project manager.
I'm Amber Beverlin with DLR Group.
I'm Patrick Cox with DLR Group.
I'm Bruce Dawson with Gridell Engineering Resources here in Jefferson City.
Paul Sampson, Central Reserve Professional Services.
Me.
I'm Leslie Backstrom. I'm with the Architects Alliance.
I'm Kerry Gampford with the Architects Alliance. I know we have a lot of information going on the screen for you, so I'm just going to say a couple introductory things. Like Dr. Luthen said, since April, the April election, I think we've had 10 to 12 meetings with faculty and staff over at the high school to get input, not only on how they see the current high school being managed, but also the new high school. That's been going on. The, we had a firm onsite that scanned the existing high school, what they call a dot cloud, and converted that to a 3D Revit. That work was done in the summer. July through September, though, Gridell Engineering and Bruce Dawson started some preliminary geotechnical investigations. Bruce, I don't know if you can summarize that or do you want to now?
Yeah. I'd like to do it. Go into it.
Sure.
From here, come to the phone. I'll do it.
Why don't you do it from the hallway?
Okay. Upstairs. All right. Well, we're the geotechnical engineering record for both school projects. And I'm going to take this opportunity and say thank you for the chance to serve on this capacity. At Union Street, we've done a preliminary investigation that's really focused on the building additions. And what remains at Union Street is an investigation of that north of a site improvement in the large parking area. At Mission Drive, we've done a more broader investigation of the site, but it was focused on the building area and the potential site development areas, primarily the parking and building areas. Remaining to do at Mission Drive is possibly some investigation of the areas where the large embankment fills will, as we say, toe out in the lower parts of the site and possibly some more detailed rock investigation within the building footprint. Reports have been issued on both those sites and the team is now using those to develop more design details and to evaluate foundation options.
That work is what Bruce described as being used by the construction management firm doing their pre-construction work and also by the structural engineers when they consider different footing and foundation systems. So we'll get into that. There's also been some preliminary survey work by CMPS. Paul's here tonight. He's going to talk in just a minute about the rest of the activities that CMPS, another local firm, is doing. We initially concentrated on the program and requirements of the current high school. The idea being to take the input from the faculty, knowing that it was more of a challenge to fit that into an existing building than to build a new building. So we take the input on the current and what needs to be renovated and apply those lessons learned to the second high school. Simultaneous to that, we've been working with Nichols Career Center staff to talk about how to achieve their long-range plans. As you know, Lynn Technical College vacated some space so that they picked up some square footage there. Also by reducing the high school population, picked up some square footage there. So balancing their needs with space becoming available was another part of what I call onsite interview of faculty and staff. Everybody knows the construction manager at risk process. I think that was from July through October with advertising, submissions, interviews, and contract negotiations. Nabholz is here tonight. They have a part of this presentation to go over with you. I want to emphasize too, that they've been a great contributor to the team, along with the other disciplines, in that they've been critiquing and reviewing the work and doing cost and constructability scenarios. And frankly, they did that before they were under contract. So as soon as they were selected, they became part of the team and started working on that. In working with Nabholz, we realized that the 179 site, the second high school site, how should I say this? Has significant topography change which impacts cost. And so there was more than one way to organize the school over there with the exact same square footage, exact same adjacencies and relationships. Different shaped schools could have millions of dollars in difference in earthwork. So Amber and Patrick are going to explain sort of the evolution of the plan that was simultaneously being priced out. And primarily that was focused on earthwork. And what it would take to fit the building on the site. Leslie Backstrom is here as the project manager from our office. Larry Branhorst in our office has been involved. ACI Boland has been at all of the meetings. They've been a great bridge from the 2014 long-range planning report to the work being done now. They're at another meeting tonight, but they've been in all the meetings we've been having. Kevin Gresher, Amber Beverlin, and Pat Cost, you're going to hear from them in a moment. There's, I want to emphasize, we're working on both schools at the same time. Both the current high school and the second high school. We're presenting the second high school tonight because if you think about it, it has many months more of site work required before building construction starts. Building construction at the current high school won't really start until the summer and there's much less site work to prepare for. But there's an enormous site work package for the second high school. And Paul and his team at CMPS are even working on some early packages to be released.
This week.
This week to Nabholz for some early bidding and some early work you'll see on construction right around the end of the year, beginning of the year.
Kerry, could I just?
Yes, sir.
Add something. One thing I think is important throughout the entire process, we've talked about our pillars of learning, partnership, stewardship, and throughout the process, and I commend them through Kerry and the architects, through Nabholz of ensuring we want a learning environment that's a positive learning environment. Partnerships through input, we're stronger together, we're all working together. And then the stewardship piece, that's what we talked about in design of an expectation that we're being good stewards of patrons' money and there are 18,000 different ways to skin a cat or anything else you're skinning or building and whatever that might be. And how we do that of ensuring that it's reflective of our core values and being good stewards. So I appreciate them considering all options. And you know, we've talked about the Pinto Chevrolet Cadillac version. That's something we want to be proud of. That also built Buick-ish. It's not going to be the Cadillac. It's something that we can take pride in that's consistent with the current high school and that will kind of match up there, so.
And I know that Paul has been working, CMPS too, like all the other offices are working on both schools. So Paul's been leading the effort on the second high school. Mike Bates wanted me to assure you, he's been working on both of them. And Brian McMillan is the leader on the current high school. I think Paul's going to talk a little bit more while Amber and Patrick are talking about the evolution of the plan because he's really given some good feedback on cut and fill and the impact on grading and excavation on the site. So work on both is in progress. We're showing the second high school tonight because again, it has a much larger earthwork component to it than the current high school. So we're going to see floor plans, site plans, 3D views, going to look at virtual reality. Nabholz, Preston, and Michael are going to talk about scheduling and their review of costs of the ongoing work by the design team. So can we put that phase slide up? Is that early? Shows the phases of construction, phases of the project. Okay. Just to remind everybody, these are, this is kind of how our work is broken down in the design team of the different phases. So we are talking tonight about schematic design report for the second high school. It involves the disciplines of architectural, civil, structural, mechanical, electroplumbing, and fire protection. But we are talking about the second high school in schematic design. So we're in that 15% category of work. Each one of those categories is a submission to the Board of Education, to the owner. And each one of those gets a component matched with Nabholz reviewing and critiquing that work. So just to remind you, we're up there in that schematic design phase. This is a large project and you know, we're used to... Bob, when we work on renovations of elementary schools, our schematic designs and design development phases aren't as long as these are. They're much quicker. But this is a big project, so they take more months than a typical five or $10 million construction project. What's the next phase? Next slide. And then again, all of the work, I won't go through all of that, but just to let you know, the, you can see up there where tonight, the decline, Board of Ed work session, the 30th. Talking about the schematic design on the second high school. We'll immediately be able to take that. We didn't want to start talking in depth to the city until you folks had seen a draft. We'll immediately start talking to the city about code review. We have another meeting planned with Nichols Career Center staff to come back and talk to them. And then the schematic design on the current high school will be, I don't know if we have the date set, but it'll be roughly 30 days from now. So that's why we have Board of Education work session, plus or minus around December 1st. We expect to be back here with the current high school. We'll again, repeat the review with the municipal code staff and we'll have a design development kickoff meeting. So you can see all the other dates there that go into next year of design development, construction documents. Simultaneous to that, the CM at Risk pre-construction services. Again, that started the day they were selected and it's ongoing. So we do have a bit of overlap of schematic design and design development with construction. Okay? So you will see stuff moving out there before we know what the cabinetry details are. You'll see an earthwork package. Basically, if you know Mickey Starkey from Nabholz, you know, he's pushing very hard for a building site on that second high school. So those packages will be coming out ahead of when the construction documents are actually complete. So with that, we'd like to take you through the schematic. That's just some more deliverable dates that we have. But with that, we'd like to take you through the schematic design of the second high school. And I think Amy, Amber, and Patrick are going to lead that.
So I'll walk you through the site plan and then go through the floor plan. So to help orient a little bit, on the left side of the screen is Missouri 179. That's kind of the low part, the valley. And then the next to this, it's kind of an old field, Frog Hollow Road on the north. North is up. And then Mission Drive and the hospital is down here on the south. Exactly. So in the white, this is the footprint of the new high school. And you notice it's a very compact footprint. Like Kerry mentioned, we worked through several options, exploring building layout. Most of those were layouts that proposed a two-story school. What you're looking at here is actually a three-story school. It goes up and down, similar to your existing high school. And that allowed us to really pull in the footprint of the high school and lessen the amount of site that we were affecting.
Paul, do you want to elaborate on that just a little bit?
So as we were looking at the layout of the proposed site, whenever you've got a, you basically got a blank canvas. And as Dr. Luthen said, you can, there's 18,000 ways to situate a building and parking lots on this site. And you know, you can change the building, you can change the site. And we worked through literally a couple of dozen different alternatives with the two-story footprint of the building. We had earthwork quantities that were upwards of a million cubic yards of earthwork. And the budget on the school project just couldn't handle that type of site development cost. So the architects kind of went back to the drawing board, looked at compressing that footprint, compressing the area of the site that would be touched with the construction project. And with the site that you see now, we're down somewhere in the 300,000 to 400,000 cubic yards of material range. So tremendous cost savings by taking a little bit of extra time and really drilling down into some details on the site development. And I'll just kind of run you through the site plan quickly. On the south end of the site is the roundabout to, on Mission Drive to the hospital. There would be a public street on the east side of the site that would connect to Frog Hollow Road. Again, that'll be a... Perfect. So here's the public street running along the east side of the site. As you go north from the roundabout, there'd be a driveway along the southern end of the building and then a large parking field here. That's about approximately half of the parking spaces. Into the main entrance, the front of the high school, there'll be a circulatory driveway and then some visitor parking in the front. Continuing to the north is another driveway that basically loops all the way around the backside and ties back in with the roundabout. We think that this will probably be a potential location for bus pickup and drop off. The front could also be used for that. I guess we get in and working with the staff a little bit and Bob and his folks and seeing which of those options really works out better from a transportation standpoint. And then we've got another large parking field on the north, serving the north end of the site. Trying to work with the topography that's there and minimizing the amount of grading that we're doing. As you come in on the east side of the building, you'll be coming in the middle floor of the building. There'll be a atrium area through the middle of the building and then you'll be going one floor down to where the back driveway is at. And then there'll be another floor up. So the parking lot on the north end of the building will serve the, will be at the lower level elevation. As you come along the west side of the building, you'll be going upgrade. And then this parking lot will be at the middle floor elevation. And then the front will be at the middle floor elevation as well. We do have a space here for some practice fields just off of the driveway. And it doesn't show up on this plan, but we have looked at a couple of options providing some additional remote practice fields down in the valley here and up in this area.
And I might just touch on one thing that at the site here for the second high school, practice facilities for all of our sports. So the basketball and volleyball in the school, but the outdoor as far as providing practice facilities, not competition. So the football and track, the acting stadium for both. Soccer on 179, tennis, Washington Park, baseball, Vivian, softball, 63 fields. And that's what we've said from the beginning. I know it just shows here, but there will be practice facilities here. It's not depending from exactly where, but it's practice. So we're, it'll be good for practice, but it's not for competition. That's consistent with what we shared.
Kind of what we're looking at is this would be soccer or football, one or the other. Down in this kind of elongated area would be the other soccer or football. And then potentially over here would be baseball, softball, practice facility. Anybody have any questions on the site?
I have a question. The plan originally called for accommodating 1,500 students when it opens with expansion to 1,800. Where would the expansion take place with this compressive footprint?
And I'll let the architects talk about that a little bit. But it is, we do have some green space at the, basically this rectangle here are the student learning centers. That's the three-story portion of the building. This area just to the north, green space would be where that future expansion would be slated. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
So this is a 3D view here. The front door is at the red arrow. So this is the top of the hill, looking west down towards Highway 179. So you enter in at a one-story area where the administration is located. And I'll go into that floor plan next. And then once you get into this area, it's the academic portion where the classrooms are, there's a level up and a level below. And the gymnasiums are actually level down to kind of touch on what Paul was saying, the grade drops. So it kind of made sense to have those levels drop down with the grade. So then in the floor plan, again, the red arrow is the front door up here. And I'll zoom in through different areas and kind of walk through those. So after entering into the front door, one would walk into a secured vestibule. To the right would be the main administration. They'd be able to check in at a window and then go into a waiting. If they were a student before school hours, these doors would be able to just be open. They could just walk in. To the left is the counseling suite in red. The green is the special services area. They have access off this main foyer and also an entry so that they could have access to if they were dropped off after hours as well. So this represents life skills. Nursing is also here. The purple is performing arts. So we have a small theater comparable in size to the little theater at the existing high school. Vocal band and some supporting spaces for that practice, storage. The yellow represents the commons, dining. And that wraps around here outside of the gymnasium is kind of a different scale of dining options. Kitchen is in gray. There's some support services like mechanical services. And then a patio space off of this commons here. I'll show you a 3D view where that, this just showed up. So this is, once you've walked in the door, gotten in the school a little bit, this is a look into the commons on the left. Immediately to the left would be an entrance to the little theater. You see the atrium. This is what we're looking at beyond. There's a level that goes down from there and a level above. These are the classrooms beyond. This is the tech area next to this cafe. And we've designed the connection to the gymnasium such that it has transparency and operable doors so it could be opened up if there was a function you wanted to open up. And this kind of serves as a pre-function space. And the colors in the 3D connect to the colors on the floor plan. So now we'll zoom into the athletics department, or at least this area. This is what we call a walk-down gym. So visitors would enter this way and go into the gym at the top level and then they would walk down into the seating bowl where the floor is the level below. And this is the area of the auxiliary gym. Its floor level is the low level below. This is the tech center. So it's, it actually serves as a classroom space and also servicing students' devices throughout the day. This is a stair that goes up. This is the outline where you see like an X in the floor plan. That means there's a space below or it's open. So this is where the floor plate is open to the space below. And we'll look into the gymnasium. That's a look. So you could then walk down to your seat, walk around the gymnasium. This is the cafe next to it. And now we'll look into the academic space. To touch on your question of capacity, so we've designed this, the building right now to service 1,500 students. Each classroom is only occupied 75% of the day. So what we've done is we've provided these spaces in red. We call them teacher workrooms. So in the future, we need to ramp up capacity to meet those 1,800 students. This classroom is only being taught in three out of the four periods. That fourth period, another teacher could teach in this space and that teacher could go to this teacher workroom. So they have a space where they go, they touch down, and you can up your capacity in that room.
May I ask, in the meetings with our staff, how did that go over teachers sharing classrooms?
Well, right off the bat, everyone has a classroom.
Okay.
And to get up to 1,800 students, it wouldn't be every teacher that would have to share, but we did make that note today.
It's not uncommon to have already been done in the past few years in high school already. So they're aware of the practice and...
Can I get you guys just to speak up just a little bit more and we're going to make sure that the mics pick you up?
So in the classroom area, each light blue is a classroom. That's a core classroom, social studies, English, math. And the teal represents a practical arts, which is like in these areas, it would be like a graphics design, a business class, kind of a little more special or unique program space. The red space again is the teacher workroom. And then the green represents a special services resource room, which is like a smaller classroom for students who need just a little, more special attention, but with basic courses. And there's a variety, the way we've arranged this is the classrooms open up to these areas in dark blue, which are collaboration areas where a small group or even a classroom in the sense, a couple of classrooms in this middle space can go out to work on projects, collaborate with other classrooms. And we also have what we call think tanks, which are like small enclosed glass boxes where students can go to collaborate or if they're testing, these are areas where they can go. We have one of these here, here, and also here. And then what we're seeing is floor openings in the middle. Again, this is, we compacted the floor plan, so there's three levels. But what we did is we provided clear stories above, so light is coming down into all three stories from, in the middle of the space. And we also have windows around the outside of all these spaces here to let light in. We have science labs on this side here with prep rooms in between and where it doesn't share another lab, it has a prep room. This is a, these are stairs. This is a, these are stairs, um, for egress. And we'll look at this, the middle space. So we're looking towards, uh, the middle. So there's a space below, there's another level below, a level above. Uh, windows up here, this is the clear story that lets the light in down. Um, this is, uh, this is actually that workroom here. We're trying to capitalize on the wall space, uh, designing in, um, rightable surface for the students to work, uh, groups or individually. And this is that middle, uh, large collaboration area. And we'll go downstairs from here. Um, and it's very similar to what I just talked through on the level above. It, because it is the bottom level, it doesn't have floor openings. So there's more floor space to have like dedicated, um, a shared maker space, which i- is like, uh, space for teams, uh, or classrooms to come together and work on projects together. If it's a, I know right now at the existing high school, there's a, uh, there's an English and a science class that have a shared space, um, and they collaborate throughout the whole semester on projects. This would be, uh, a space for them to, uh, meet up and work on projects.
Patrick?
Yeah.
Could you go back, um, where on, where this view right here, where has that been on the next screen?
So this is taken from here on the main level. So you would have walked in the front door, down to here, and you'd be looking this way.
Okay, thank you.
And then I went down a level. So this is the athletics and, uh, kind of a mirrored academics footprint here. So we have these spaces in the middle. This is the project lead the way studio for, um, the math department. And they really focus in on engineering, um, architecture and design. So this is their studio for them. And this is, um, a classroom that also functions as, uh, student council. Um, so they have an office and storage. After meeting with the, the staff, that's a, it's a really, uh, that program is a point of pride in the district. We can understand. So they need a little bit of extra space for that. More, smaller group areas in dark blue. This is, uh, an ag classroom next to the outdoor thinking, um, they could easily get outside if they have a greenhouse in the future or if they want to have, uh, have small plants or a plot that they're working on outside. Art, uh, so this is all, this is just kind of a, the bottom commons area. Uh, so the art classrooms are on this side of that, um, with display in between, mixed in here. It's kind of hard to see, but we're designing some display areas for both art and athletics. So art is in pink with workrooms in between, um, or more like storage, um, killing areas. This is like a spinning wheels for three D art. Um, this is the media center library in orange. And in teal up here is the fax. So this is fax design, like interior design, um, child development. And then up here is the foods. And, um, so kind of the thought with all these programs are they're kind of unique, uh, programs in the sense that we'd want them, um, easily visible off this main commons. And if the dining had an event where, um, they're preparing something and they had an after-hours event, they could use this space as kind of a spill out dining area. And we'll look at a view, um, this way, back towards the media center. So this is the bottom level, the shared, uh, maker area, collaboration space that I'm standing in. And we can see above a floor opening to the space above. Classrooms have, uh, a little more transparency along the corridor. And we're looking into the gymnasium now. So this is the main gymnasium here. It's, uh, arranged in a way that these bleachers can be retracted. And we can have two, um, courts, uh, longways this way and volleyball as well. And, uh, right next to it is the auxiliary gymnasium. So another full-size court, less seating. This is the weights room up here, storage for P E athletics, uh, P E lockers down here. This is, um, an exterior entrance. So this is kind of the, uh, on the site, if you remember the, um, area Paul was talking about, a bus drop-off. This would be a great, um, if your team is, another team is pulling up in a bus, the road's right here so they can unload, go into the locker rooms. Uh, the athletic locker rooms are up here, but it's a way to get in the building. Restrooms, uh, aerobic dance and storage area and, uh, a small training room, the athletics department. And we'll kind of look from the main four, the gymnasium, um, back up to... So this is from the main level of the gymnasium. Looks, and this is actually the commons back up here.
That's very similar to Battle High School, isn't it? The way they have the commons up there.
Yeah, the walk down style.
One thing also, excuse me, Patrick, am I just on the auxiliary gymnasium of looking at, if you share their seating wise, so primarily freshman, maybe as far as you could have games if you wanted, uh, but it's not the whole, you know, as far as full seating, but for lower level, um, you could if you wanted to there.
Yep.
Yeah.
And the last part of this lower floor plan, we have, uh, shops and a little more athletics. So we, in the, in the teal is the wood studio and the metal studio with a shared classroom in between. This is located near the, uh, outside for ease of deliveries and exhaust, uh, health classroom in the middle and a wrestling, training room, and then the athletic locker rooms. And actually, this whole area, uh, that I'm outlining is, is the storm shelter. So it's a, it's a shelter designed to withstand tornadoes. And, uh, the thought behind that is this is, this wall is actually tucked into the hill. So we kind of have a hardened wall for free already. So it was really an ideal area to just build another three walls. Previously, we were looking at the auxiliary gym. We're going to be doing that, uh, at your existing high school. Uh, the auxiliary gymnasium will be the storm shelter there because we're not building a lot of new construction at that location. But here it makes sense to utilize this area.
That be enough square feet to accommodate, like if school is in session, all the students and teachers?
Yes, it's, I, I think it's five square feet per student and teacher, every occupant in the building. We're designing that for.
Can the only thing I can add to that, we're, we're looking at a first floor, uh, shelter as well because that's where our life skills kids are. And then we also have the kids, he'll show you this third flat, third, third floor plan. So when we think about kids that are up in this corner and there was a drill and they'd have to get down to the lower level, we really feel like in a second one on the main level done responsibly in a good spot structurally would be a good addition. And then we can have those two locations together. They'll make the right number of square footage to serve the entire staff and students.
So on the upper level, again, similar classroom layout to what we've seen two times before with, um, a, a little more floor opening on the upper level to let more light down. We have a couple, uh, practical arts classes. These are the business graphic design courses. Science labs on the entire right side here with the science classroom at the end. The other three science labs are below this on the level below. And, and then another teacher workroom area, a, uh, special services resource area. In this block, a- anytime you see gray, that's kind of like a supports of bathrooms, elevator, storage, janitors, uh, custodial closet, et cetera.
How many, since there's so much detail, how many elevators are in the building?
Uh, there is, there's one elevator right now, right here. And it's kind of at, at the center.
Okay. It's, yeah, it's located in a way that when you have the building closed off and you only want people in the gym, let's say, that you can do that. And then during the day, it can also be used for students who need it to get to wherever they need to as well.
Thank you.
Do you guys have any questions now? Just to kind of, so far, they'll continue on here. Do you guys have any questions for?
I just have one. So if there's a competition in the gym and I'm coming to a basketball game, I need to go through the main high school to get there, unless I go through the boys locker room.
Uh, a girl's locker.
Can you go back to where you showed us that if the bus was dropping off right there?
If, if you're a, a, a spectator.
How do I get to the gym? I have to go through the commons to get there.
Yes, the intention is there's a spectator level and an athlete level, right? So you would come in the main entrance like you would for anything else you're going to this high school. So you have, wayfinding is still there. So whether I'm coming as a parent during the day or to an, an event, I'm still coming through the main entrance of the school. And then I make it over. And then that way they can do crowd control, however they want to operate the events as well. Wherever you want to take tickets and do your car control, you can do that as well. Whether you open the glass doors or control it up closer to that main entry as well.
So are elderly or handicapped, does it be just with the elevator and down?
Yep.
Well, actually, uh, they would, you wouldn't have to move to any levels. You would just, if you were handicapped, you'd in the front door and, uh, there would be accessible seating at the top.
But if you wanted them down, you, yes, either way.
If they were going to go floor level, they'd need to go down the elevator. But there'll be handicapped seating at the level, high level.
So how far of a walk is that from the front door to the gym?
I don't have a scale in my plan.
If you think about J C High School, you have cafeteria right next to the, uh, the gym. It's just that you can see in.
I got it. But I'm just trying to think how far of a walk it is for an elderly person to get from the parking lot into the gym. How far is that?
The other, the, the other thing, if you want to park even closer or more live, that you were asking about the lower level access, that's a corridor, not a, not a locker room to go into.
Right. Really, my main concern was people who are only going to be there for a gym activity are now in our main building. That, that is my main concern, more than the walking and the parking and whatever is. I was rather hoping we could segregate them off out of our building if they didn't need to be in our building.
And you can.
Okay.
So, so there'll be ways to control all of that. You won't be, you could section off and have only people accessing the commons and the gymnasium. And that's it. We'll have ability to secure the entire rest of the building. That's what I talked about with, it's so important where that elevator goes. So you can still use that without getting into the classrooms at all. And then all of the, um, if we go back up to, so then all the administration will be locked off. You won't be able to access any of that. And then the same thing with all of the performing arts. So you're really only going to have access to that commons. That's it. And that's important to have access to that so that you have a space for everybody to get out and mill around, let their kids run around, eat their concessions if they want to. So that's really your patron level. So they're using that yellow portion, really, that's it.
What you can't see here is there's a pocketed doors that after-hours can be closed off. So that this entire section of the building is, you can't go in it.
Hey, Patrick, why you've got, why, excuse me, why you've got that slide on? Is there a board? You're going to see in the next meeting, this is, still has a lot of similarities with the current high school. Entering from here, if you imagine where J F and J drive intersect. The building is one story right there and it will be flanked, that entrance at J F and J drive will be flanked in red. Admin will be on both sides. And there will be this common area through the building pointing towards Atkins Stadium. And you'll have a choi- that will be sort of your lobby, if you will. Nichols can be locked off, the high school can be locked off. But you'll have a commons area, which is the current cafeteria. Fleming Fieldhouse will be here. The auxiliary gym instead of here will be here. But the, the organizational diagram of this and being able to, to secure the left-hand side or the right-hand side and, and using that center area for large crowds to feed into the gym is really similar between both buildings. And the fact that you're one story at the top of the diagram and two or three stories at the bottom of the diagram.
And I think Laura Lachance Hall did a comment. I've been to Battle on a Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon for kids' ballgames. And when you walk in and then to go up, you go down a hall, you, they currently, the Saturdays I've been there, you could walk the, the entire school and you could go down halls. And now maybe they have the capability, but they've not, you know, blocked any of that off. Uh, so I think that's a question, a valid question. We want to make sure that to be able to close it off if it's Saturday weekend, um...
For safety purposes.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Will it be, I'm sorry, will it be level coming from, uh, the parking lots into the area for the commons? Because at the current high school, what kills me isn't the walk in the building. It's especially for older people and people probably, yeah, either way, you're going up.
There's that visitors parking right across from the entrance that appeared to be level, yes? Is that correct?
I noticed that too.
It appears to be.
It, it appears to be. Yeah.
It appears to be level.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking.
Okay, so this is the main entrance into the school. This entire parking lot is at the, at the same level as, um, this interior front doorway. Now, there's some grade to it. It's not anything close to what you see at the, at the current high school. This parking lot will be at the lower level. And, um, you know, depending on how you operate the facility, um, you could either, you know, like, like I said, there's a central corridor that would be open. You know, you could potentially put a, a secondary access into that central corridor to where you're still basically, the only thing you have open is that common area. And from, uh, this parking lot, this would basically be a flat walk coming in the lower level.
So like for teachers who maybe have a spike card that they can come in side doors?
And, and even basketball games too. I think, I think you could, um, you know, we'll have sidewalks all the way along this, this frontage road. But I think you could, uh, you know, have a secondary entrance into that lower level if you, if you wanted to operate it that way. If not, the access from this parking lot to this parking lot, it's, it's pretty steep and it'd be very similar, if not steeper than what's, what's at the current high school.
But parking lot F into entrance B?
F and H are all flat.
Okay.
Yep. And I think there's, I'm trying to remember, there's about three hundred and fifty parking spaces in the south lot, I think. Another sixty or so here. And then there's another two hundred and seventy-five, give or take, in, uh, in those two lots.
So six hundred, six hundred and ninety-five spaces?
Yeah, somewhere in there.
Not planning on street parking in the main parking?
Correct. No street parking.
We have to utilize that at the current high school.
Sure.
Thank you for those answers.
I was just going to make one comment before we move on, on the compacting of it. Maybe you'll see and maybe it'll become more apparent when we come back to you, talking about second high school or first high school. But there's a lot of similarities, more similarities now with this compacted clerkman than there were before between the two. So I think it's a great thing and there's a lot of opportunities there. The learning spaces, as you see when we bring up this other stuff, I think you'll be able to really see the great spaces that are being developed and the way that Pat's trying to get the light down to the lower level so that you still have really great environments, even though they're, um, in that more compacted floor plan, so.
So if you pull up the sketch, I'm just going to walk through all this, talk to the slides. We've got a three D model we'll pull up and just go slide by slide, kind of help you understand a little more. So this is an aerial, the school. So these are the two parking lots that we talked about would be flat. So you'd be able to park in either one of these, walk straight in the front door here. Approach a little closer.
And then, by the way, excuse me, Patrick, has not been named for whatever reason. They just have that included there, but that is not to imply.
No.
Anything whatsoever.
So this is the front door and vestibule here on the right side is the administration, um, reception area. So they could see anybody coming and going. Counseling is on the left. So we just, we just bypass the secure vestibule. On the left is the performing arts. So there would be a door just around the corner if they were having, uh, if you had an event, like a, a play. Um, this is where you, you walk. um, this is where you, you walk right in the door and go in there. And beyond, we see, uh, the roof has kind of popped up. This is what we call clear story. Um, so as windows continuously, light goes in. These are some decorative light fixtures. And we have the commons to the left. Back beyond is the dining server area. So if you, on your lunch break, the student would go in here, get their lunch, and then come out to any one of these dining spaces in this area here. Um, we have the stairs beyond to go down, the elevator's just up here on the right. And then that whole academics area opens up, um, to the right on, with three hallways that tuck and go right. Just a little closer view. So now we're at the gymnasium. So we just kind of, if we were coming to a game, that's the direction we would have walked. So from here, um, anyone could walk down to a seat all the way down to the floor if they wanted from up here.
So up at the top where that walking track is or whatever?
Yes.
That could be the handicap?
Yeah, we would design like alcoves, like if you go to a baseball stadium, a lot of times on the walkway around, there's alcoves for accessible seating and also on the floor as well. Additional commons dining area wrapped around here, kind of blending into this tech area. Trying to design it in a way that it's kind of seamless between where you get help through your device or it's kind of more of a, a cafe-like environment. Just to kind of provide different environments so kids are comfortable and being able to find a place where they can learn best. This is that service counter with monitors here in this area. Uh, and a stair going up to the third level. Over here, there's a stair going down. So I kind of pause on this bridge and look back to the front door where we walked in. So this is that atrium space we're talking about. Uh, it goes up a level and then the roof, um, is raised up five feet, let glass, or let light in. Um, we have the science labs up here in blue above us. Kind of a seating area, kind of a bar stool height area for kids, a, a place to put their laptops. Back behind us, more science labs, uh, on this entire stretch here. That's actually a science lab now. And then science labs above. And down below the pink is the art with kind of a gallery space and then, uh, inch, or a, a, a separate entrance to the outside from this, on this level down here.
You mentioned the pillars before, but those are just to match with the floor plan.
Mm-hmm.
We're not proposing pupils yet. Maybe.
So we'll continue into the academic area, classrooms. So around the floor openings, we see more kind of, um, middle height seating areas, um, different, uh, a variety of furniture options, uh, flexible furniture. Students can move around. And this is, these are kind of, this is kind of a unique space. So we've designed these two classrooms flanking this space with a, a stretch of doors that is operable. So it can open up. So these, um, these programs, um, a lot of times they're centered around projects so they can be opened up. Students can spill out to this space and work on their projects. Beyond in blue, we see core classrooms. And at the end down here, some space, uh, small collaboration area. And another one along this hallway in between these two core classrooms. And the smaller alcove. And these are core classrooms along this corridor. And this is that think tank area I was describing earlier. Another little glass fish, fish bowl, if you will. Six to eight students, um, max, um, highly visible so students or teachers can keep an eye on what's happening in these spaces.
Before you move on, just, I was going to mention, Pat mentioned meetings with teachers, but just to reiterate, we have met with all of the staff, every, every staff member that wanted to have some input in here. And they, this was one of the places they really gravitated towards. So when we were looking at the plan and had all these different sizes spaces, so it's a variety of different spaces for their different modalities. They can really work in small groups, one to two, four, five, six. They really gravitated towards that opportunity. So we really, as we compacted and looked at the plan, we really looked for more opportunities to make sure we had a lot of those spaces. I think they really feel like they can make use of.
So one above, one below, floor openings both on this level. And then we go downstairs, another one of those think tank areas. And, um, kind of a more medium group size space here. Um, a place for a group to work on presentation with monitors on the wall, um, some comfortable seating around here. Couple of classrooms with collaboration space between. This is kind of a neat space. We took advantage of this hallway, tucked it in a little bit and, and made it a riding surface. So it's, it's not just a, a place of passage, it's actually designing and learning spaces at kind of every square inch of the school here we can. So this is the lowest level. On the floor plan, this was the space, um, with student council room. And this was the, um, project lead the way space with operable walls to this middle space like we saw above with more area on the floor on this level to really work on projects, spill out if they want to bring your entire class out here. The corridor going to down here, kind of mirroring what we just saw behind us. The stair goes up to where we just came from, up, dipped into the wall a little bit. The art present, or, uh, display area. This is the media center beyond in orange as well. And again, it has operable walls. If they want to open up and kind of, um, be linked to this maker area, collaboration space, they can do that. If they want to shut it and just have kind of swing doors, they're there as well. So they can really control how they want to use that space. There's a couple of small think tank rooms inside the media center, um, places for their books and a space large enough for a classroom to come and meet inside the library.
That's the library right there?
This is it, yes.
Okay.
In orange.
Question, uh, are, are there going to be multiple areas for charging stations? Because we're with the Croons and all.
Yeah.
Some may not always charge up their stuff at home, get there, are you going to?
We hear that happens a lot. It gets forgotten. So we're, we're trying to really, especially on these, uh, bar height, um, areas, really designing power to spaces like those where students would be sitting with a laptop, um, and more power. That was one of the main things we heard talking with teachers is we need more power, not just on the walls throughout. So that's, that's on our, on our radar.
So one of the groups you talked to, the janitors, because I'm seeing a lot of glass here and-
So how do the teachers feel about kids being able to look in every classroom and the kids looking out when they're sitting in the class?
So, yeah, so that's, those are more discussions that we need to have. So we start out with, uh, high visibility and then we have continued discussions with, uh, Gary and Larry and all their-
Because I don't see that being positive if I'm sitting there wanting to teach and my class is looking outside the whole time. I'm not getting anything done.
So we see it both ways. So, uh, the other school thought is that what's going on in the classroom is really engaging. It keeps them so engaged that they're not going to touch what's going on, you know, in the hallway, so.
So you'll ask the, you'll ask the teachers what they want?
Oh yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, so we just proposed something and then a lot of the whole entire team tells us what we might be like.
So this is like the new standard for building design, but then you get half walls and you want to be able to shut that light back, you know?
And I had a question. These glass walls can provide a, a relative sound barrier so you're not hearing spillage from room to room or hallway to room.
Yep, great question, yeah. So they can lock into place and have seals and they're made so that they have not quite the exact same as a drywall wall, but well enough that you can definitely teach in both spaces and not have disruption.
And I actually kind of had a follow-up question to that. I had a very similar thought. I see a lot of open space, which is great for collaboration and projects like you've mentioned. But if I'm a student that needs a quiet space to go study, where, where do I go?
So, so there's space in the library traditionally, there's several enclosed spaces. All of those think tanks are enclosed. So there's a, a handful of options where there's actually enclosed spaces, not just open.
Okay, I just want, the reason I ask is certainly not to critique what, what we're looking at down to, you know, down to a penny. Uh, I just want to make sure that what we end up with is, is flexible enough. And I think that's kind of where you were going. This is that, you know, students come in all types and shapes and kinds and, and they learn differently, like we all know. So we want to make sure that what, what we end up approving and what gets built is flexible enough. So that way we are able to accommodate different learning styles.
And I love that you use that word flexible too, because a big piece of what we can do to create those kind of environments for the kiddos is with furniture. What can be more flexible than furniture? That way we can get, have such great pieces that can provide that closure, give that student that feeling that they're just the only one in the world. And then when you're ready to move it or you want to do five more of them or you realize they're really popular, you can duplicate that very easily in a very cost-effective way.
Sure. Well, I think that's the big lesson I, I think I heard a lot of folks learn. Like if you were to go back to the, and not to invoke thoughts of the past, but if you go back to the, kind of the building iteration from back around 2013 was, I think the community's main interest, at least one of their interests there was, we want to make sure that the building we have is flexible enough. So that way as learning styles change, you know, make, you know, five years from now or 15 years from now, that our building stands the test of time. So that way we can make adjustments on the inside. Because that's what's, that's the important stuff, is the learning that goes on inside a building. And so we just want to make sure that it's, that it's flexible and can accommodate those changes.
And if I could piggyback on the other question about electrical. For example, in the media center at Simonson, they have, um, outlets in some of the chairs. So if there's electricity that can be, if there's the capacity to have furniture with plugins, that'd be fantastic.
And we have a huge advantage with this new school is we can actually put power in the floor as well. So you're, you're not, you don't have a, a pigtail running from the wall where it's-
Does the floor design would be hollow?
No, it's not.
No gap space?
They have mine tomorrow, it's going to be that you want kids in the electric chair.
Yeah, I'm thinking the same thing. Way to go wild with that. Sticking Simonson or similar type of prison.
That's right, exactly, exactly.
That's right. So if I should go through this, I'm sorry, one other question. If you go through this, are we taking advantage, I mean, it's new construction. So are we taking advantage of, um, energy efficient lighting, things of that nature? Is, or is it a mixture of both or kind of where are we at? Anyways, envisioning there.
The kind of way we've been moving towards lighting is LED, it's, the cost has gone way down. So it's energy efficient. And, um, we're designing with a lot more natural light, which cuts down on the amount of artificial lighting you'd have to use.
We actually have an energy anal analyst in our office who, that's all he focuses on. So when we were bugging Paul about all these different building outlines, we had another guy looking at, well, what's the best way to orient the building? So we make sure that we're, uh, making sure that it's efficient as well. So we use different types of glass on the different faces based on the sun exposure. And then we got that exposure just right so that it'll reduce the cost as much as we can.
So in, in the 3D model, we're kind of working our way back up towards the front door in this large stair. We call it a learning stair. If you have a class that, that wants to come and you have a presentation or presenter, it's a great spot to have kind of that informal presentation. It also serves as a mode of circulation here. So it kind of doubles up and it's, it's a, it's a space for students to meet in the morning as well. Um, and then as I move back up here, we're back at the front door and out the building. So now we actually, we have, uh, do what we call a virtual reality tour. We'll let each one of you kind of look through and you can look around inside the building, um, using these and our smartphones.
No popcorn though, sorry.
Darn. Oh, I'm sure there's candy. I guess that didn't care. Maybe not popcorn.
Yeah, so, so we have, if any of you want to, you can, because we're going to leave these with you. So we'll share them out. And so if you would like to use your own-
It's kind of like a Viewmaster slide. It's kind of like a Viewmaster slide. And you just click right. And you can look all around you, especially when you're inside.
So there's an app called Qubeeze, so you download that. Well, you have to download that and then you scan that and the viewer allows you to look through all of your things.
Yeah, I've, yeah, I've used this before at the center, it's really cool.
That's mine.
That's a statement.
Did you ask nicely?
I already have this, I have this.
Do you guys just want to look at this phone? Don't put it down on.
He gave him one of his phone.
That's awesome. Taking that home. Stop picking on me.
I, I never make fun of you a lot.
We do. I know, I turned it all around and it turns.
This is the app we're talking about.
Yes, that one right there.
Is it QBD play and share 3D mode? Look through it and then turn. First one is the first one.
I know, keep turning this one right here.
She sees Stephanie. The same thing you just saw and then moving around in there. You can see it moving.
You can hit the button here.
That's what I would say. I don't do that. I guess first you need to work with. Yeah.
Well, I think the app's doing. I think.
And then you can press this button to go to the next slide.
So we get to keep these?
Yes. I don't know, but gave enough, we've got enough for the head.
Don't take my piece of paper.
Yeah, do you guys have one extra?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Got to figure out how to freaking load it, no we don't.
I'm still loading them.
Is it $9 to load? To nine bucks to George?
It's great.
We know it can be tricky to kind of follow, especially the first time you see something. So we just hope this helps kind of understand what everything is, how the design is advancing.
And this whole design is within budget?
So that's who's going to talk to you next?
Great.
Waiting for somebody to ask the $50,000, $100 million question.
That being a distraction. There are different types of films that you can put on glass too.
Yes.
Glasses obviously look expensive often out there, but building a wall's not much cheaper sometimes too.
Yeah, right.
You know, I like that design with the glass. I think it's really flexible.
Well, and again, that whole, you know, part of the, um, compromise to going to a three-story is making sure it's still getting light into the whole building. So that's something we have to balance is the amount of glass to get the light down in, but yet still not have a destruction.
I like that atrium style. How are you renting HVACs for the building?
VR assistance, which is what Bob and his team love. And so that, you know, so if you're familiar with how that system works, there won't be much ductwork.
Is this going to be something that, that we can run ourselves or we're going to have?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. Yeah, Bob's got VRF all throughout.
The last building I did, we installed a system that only I understood. Whoever I left.
They were in trouble, weren't they?
The building, literally, it was so high tech that.
Yeah. And there, and there is a billing, billing information system. So where you can control it all. But the VRF, you know, Bob directed us that direction. He's got that system across the district already. His guys are used to it. And then that automated system will allow them to work it even better. And then we can also even tunnel and help when there, if there is some issue or something's acting weird, we can tell them about getting help. So one other thing I just wanted to mention, like our next steps. We will be back to staff again. So what we do is go away and develop this even more and take into your comments and consideration. And then we'll come back again with that same group of staff and say, did we get it right? Did we miss something here? Do you think of something else? And then that'll be kind of the, mark the end of our design development period. And then we go hard into developing the documents for them to build off of. So we'll take this stuff back to them so they can experience it in 3D as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's funded our car stealing? Are you leaving?
If everybody got one of those, if everybody got one of those sheets. It's really easy to download that app. It's free. To do that. One, Rich, tagging on the glass and the natural light. One thing, I don't want you to think when we use the word compacted, the plan, that it's less square footage. It's the same square footage. It's the same program that we're working with at both, both schools. Again, it had to do with the cut and fill and the topography of the site. One thing about the atrium or the clear story is by letting that light fall down through, we actually get better quality of light because it bounces around more. It's more diffused. We're not near as worried about glare and things like that and having to put blinds up and that, that sort of thing. So it's actually a higher quality of light. And there are several buildings that have used that approach that DLR has worked on. And we've actually gone and toured those. I was frankly a skeptic. So if anybody wants to go see some examples of that, we can, we can let you know where those are. The next thing we want, and the last part, this is only about two more hours of this with. No, Nabol's has five sheets they want to go over with you. But again, they've been at every one of these meetings and every one of these iterations to give us, give us feedback. So we really appreciate the work they're doing too.
So, hey Carrie, before we let you go, because I know Pam asked the question. I think it's just important we make sure that we're very clear in our communications because we're, you know, this is the first real robust set of pictures that I think the community's gotten to be able to see. So while this, while the design looks a little bit different, it's, it is within the scope of budget that we were working, that we have always worked with since Props JNC have passed.
Yes. It's the same square footage. It's the same program of needs, same functions, same adjacencies. None of that has changed.
It's actually more similar to.
It actually, that wasn't, wasn't necessarily a goal, but it's actually more similar to the current high school. And I, we always had that organizational diagram of going through and stepping down the hill, but it's even, it's even more similar now in this plan.
It did. I think you can see that. I think folks would pick that up in, in those renderings. And I think that's kind of an added value that, that I think that they look more similar now than they used to.
It's amazing. And we could have left it. We could have not gone through the, the iterations. But in our opinion, the ratio of site cost to building cost was out of whack, frankly. We thought we could improve on that. It just took a lot, took a lot of cut and fill calculations to get us there.
Sure. I think Pam had a follow up for you.
Yeah. Going back to the site and the different iteration, if we have solid fill, would that solve any of the issues that we have? Would bringing in solid fill make a difference in?
I'm gonna actually let Preston Moore explain that because he's, he's been on the pre-construction side of, from Nabol's looking at it. But the oversimplified answer is, we're trying to balance the site with what we have, but we were also trying to reduce the number, the amount of acreage that we were fooling. You know, if we can reduce the, the area that the bulldozers are roaming or that we're excavating, it saved literally millions of dollars.
There were millions of dollars of difference between those different options we looked at.
And there's a reason why there are several quarries in the area.
Exactly. That's right. And frankly, you know, use the word practice fields. It would be a much different budget and a much different project if we were doing competition fields. Because we would do, we'd be doing significantly more excavation to make competition fields work versus practice fields. Because there's, you know, those have buildings going into them and concrete stands and bleachers and all that sort of thing.
Honestly, I couldn't have answered it a whole lot better than Carrie did. You did a phenomenal job there. We could have probably changed the price of the, what the fill actually costs by a few dollars a load. But in the grand scheme of things, we were dealing with millions. And it was just a vast amount of cubic yards that we were moving. So that was really the dragger behind that.
I think we had, what, 115 roughly acres starting out. We've moved down to that 50 acres plus the practice fields that we'll touch on. So a lot of those dollars are, you know, you're getting away from the million dollars of, with a million cubic yards of cut and then fill to try to balance that site. So. Hello again. Michael Feimster, a few faces I've not met before, but I just want to thank you guys for, for having us here tonight. Couple of points before we jump into our summary, because I know you're asking the question, are we on budget? And are we on schedule? Just a few points. Tonight you're seeing some of the construction management at risk factors that you have procured and decided to go with. And we commend you for that as being your advocate. You're seeing a, a design team, actually three architects, working in conjunction cohesively with a construction manager that really is understanding your needs and your requirements and implementing those into design, whilst we are checking that design and also helping assist the design team to ensure that lines up with budget and doing cost modeling, et cetera, et cetera. So it's been very good to work with DLR, ACI, and the Architects Alliance. And Carrie even mentioned when we did come on board and what we're talking about tonight is the second high school. It's really where we understood, if you remember back at interview time, that the critical path to this entire bond program is the second high school, ensuring those freshmen come in August 2019. And so that is the driving force of what we have collaboratively worked with the design team to understand. Actually, we have not just a schedule of design documents and then construction. We are going to go into construction before some of those design pieces are finalized in order to ensure that those kids are in school by 2019. Now granted, that's not the entire facility, but it sure is a very good chunk of it as we've been talking about since interview time. Another point I want to, I want to point out tonight is as a CMAR, as a construction manager at risk, sometimes you have your pre-con, your pre-construction team, and then it's all handed off to an operations team. In this case, as part of the operations team, we are here from the conception of the job all the way past warranty. So there's a lot of knowledge there that's carried from beginning to end. I just want to reinforce that, working with your design partners and also with you as the district, that knowledge is being carried through from schematic to design development to construction documents, all the way through construction to the very end. So Preston is going to go through our typical deliverables that we do for each project throughout each design phase. We're not going to go into every detail, but that really depends on what you would like to do this evening. But I will let him, turn it over to him and let him jump into that.
Thank you, Mr. Feimster. Good evening. Good to meet some of you all for the first time. And like Michael said, see some familiar faces again. So as we said, we're, we're committed to the budget that we have, that we started out with. And, and we want to bring value to the pre-con phase by, by working through that budget and what all comprises that budget with your design team. So the deliverable package that some of you have seen is, is much more robust than just a couple of numbers on the front page of a spreadsheet. So we put together our own deliverable package. It's really a dialogue between us and your designers. And I know you saw a slide earlier tonight that said at the schematic level, we're only about 15% through this design phase. So there's a lot of decisions that are still being made. There's a lot of things that are churning around in there that are, that are still on the, on the move. So, so we create as part of our deliverable package, a several, several page long document that talks about a lot of numbers, a lot of square footages, a lot of things that we're envisioning, that we're interpreting, that either has not yet been designed yet or decided upon by, by you all and your school district. So again, our typical deliverable package, we, we give a overall snapshot of the overall program budget, which is the entire bond issue itself, where we're at on soft costs for all the things that you all will be purchasing directly. And then where we're at on both of the different schools. From there, we dive in even deeper and we start talking about how much this area of the school costs. How much was the gym worth? How much is the learning community's worth? And from there, we even start dialing in deeper. How much do we have for our metal stud and drywall? How much do we have for this glass system? So we can answer all those questions rather than just coming to, to your design team with a, with a single number saying, well, we think based off of the square footage, it's going to be this much. We actually put a lot of detail and a lot of work and thought process behind our deliverables. So we go to the, oh, I got the slide. Oh, here we go. I wasn't paying attention before I got up here. Okay. So, and again, these are all things that are also in our deliverable package. But we, we call out the documents that we're using from your design team to, to help clarify our scope, to quantify our building materials, as well as how we do some of our cost modeling. So I've kind of given an example, the upper left hand corner is, is this is our quantity takeoff software. And, and we're going back to the, the designers and we're saying, these are the quantities as we understand them. Do you agree? And we had discussions about that. And they say, yeah, that's about what we had figured as well. The upper right hand corner obviously is a snapshot of, they're a three dimensional model, but it has our dimensions on there. So again, we're using everything that we have available, the 3D model, the 2D PDFs, to really dive in and understand the scope of work as it is still in design. The, the bottom right table there that you will is actually one of the things that, that I hope sets us apart from some of the, the other folks that we get to compete against every day. As the, the HVAC systems and the structural systems and the electrical systems, they, they can't really be fully designed until the architectures are done. And so we actually go in, in-house and we run calculations based off of what we see and what the dimensions are. Now, we're not electrical engineers or mechanical engineers, but we give it back to their design team and we say, did we get close? And they usually say, they give us the thumbs up or say, oh, I think you need to tweak right here. So that's some of the things that we're doing behind the scenes to help develop that number. Yes, sir?
Another part of that collaboration and conjunction of design teams. During schematic design, we did actually get market input. So we did talk to a local contractor for earthworks specifically. And as we go into design development, we actually start realizing about 40 to 50% checking all of our numbers to make sure that that's what the market's telling us for earthwork, for concrete, et cetera, et cetera.
This next slide right here, there's a lot of information up here, but really what I wanted to point out is, is in addition to showing what things cost per area, per location of the building, is we get in right now and we start coming up with what we feel are, are close quantities to what is going to be designed at the end, similar to that mechanical load study that you saw on the last drawing. I got this one blown up here because I used to be an electrician, so I still get pretty excited about electrical estimating. But right now, we've got, we've actually identified, we think there's somewhere in the vicinity of 1,200 LED two before's. And, you know, we can expect to spend probably in the vicinity of $258,000 for those light fixtures. So what that will do is as your design moves forward, we already know that we're going to use LED fixtures, but the fixture has not been selected yet. Yes, we know it's going to be LEDs and, and we know in your corridors, it's going to be some, some nicer upgraded looking fixtures. But this helps us kind of stay in, in that budget by telling our designers, this is kind of the area that we have to work with to, to spend on. Okay, this is our program budget overall. The right hand column is telling you where we were kind of at whenever we developed the budget in 2014. And then the center column, the dated 10-6 schematic design, is where we're at as of the first of this month. We are at, currently at $43 million, $95,000 for your existing high school additions and renovations. Second high school is currently at about $71 million. We are tracking your design costs. And then we are also tracking your other costs as well, which is not in our contract or in the architect's contract. Your asbestos mitigation, any new fixtures, furnitures and equipment, your technology that you had purchased for the school, any off-site utilities that the city may charge us in order to hook up sewer, electric, this, that and the other to the building. That would, that would not be part of our contract. We also still recommend that you all hold your own contingency of about $2.5 million should you decide to change something. Either the late phase of design or during construction, you have a pile of, of your own money that can pay for that change. Again, still committed to the $130 million that, that we submitted on. Right now, our costs are a little over budget, but they are within an acceptable range. So right now, we're currently 2.81% over budget. We could very easily keep working with your design team and get that right on budget. But the reality is, is that we have to keep moving and we have to keep designing in order to meet that construction schedule. So as your construction manager, we're telling the design team to move forward with this design at a 2.8% overage. We can overcome that as the scope continues to clarify itself.
Preston, within your construction costs, do you have a contingency as well?
That is correct. I, I currently have a 5% contingency of my own that is in those numbers up there, which is part of the CM at risk process and the pre-con process. If there's some, some numbers that I really misinterpreted scope and, and they start to come in a little bit higher than what I have them priced, I will spend some of my contingency on that, leaving Mr. Feimster contingency to, to construct the project. Once we get into construction, obviously there's going to be some heavy renovations in your existing school. And we have a challenging site, even though we know what kind of materials out there, we know rocks coming. We still got to get through some of that. And there may be some need for us to burn up some of our contingency during those times because we are at risk for that $130 million as well. But again, it's always going to be an open book process. You're going to know where the dollars are being spent out of that contingency. And when we get to a really comfortable spot in construction where we think all of the gotchas are out of the way, then that contingency does go back to you.
Another thing to reiterate is that we are just a schematic design. So Preston, I think has stated a couple of times, but just to reiterate, the 2.81% over on a schematic level, that $130 million bond program is a very comfortable place to be in. Because those contingencies, to Jason's point, start coming down as we go into design development into construction documents. And then as the owner and the CM, we agree what those contingencies are moving into construction.
So if it was three meetings down the road, six months, nine months down the road, when you say an acceptable range, I might say, according to who? You or us?
All of us together.
Okay. I just want to clarify that. Okay. I'm sorry. Okay. You got a freebie here, but a few of these down the road say that's acceptable. I'm like, well, it would be if we do accept it. But if we choose not to accept it, it's not acceptable.
I, I typically, 5%, overage at a schematic or even a design development level is kind of your danger zone. And we're here setting it under three. So we, we've been here many times before. So. Any questions? That's, that is our slideshow. We're much more quicker than Mr. Carrie and.
We do have a schedule. Just quick up.
Do you, do you have something like this for us too then?
I do not. That's the other thing. That's the other thing. We're, we're quicker, but with less cool stuff to look at.
But a 3%.
There are some troubles on my truck.
You're right.
We're just nuts and bolts. We had to buy these suits before we got here.
We actually, we, we asked that we all dress in dark slacks and light tops to signify that we were a team. And Carrie said, well, I am part of this team. I'm very unique, so I would like to invert my color scheme.
You obviously know Carrie Gamper.
I'm, I'm here to answer any questions about budget. If you don't have any more questions, Michael Feimster is going to touch on the schedule. But please let me know if there's.
Where's your savings going to come from on that, on the schematic to the.
Where's your savings going to come from on the schematic to the next phase?
To get the $3.5 million back out. Right now, because the scope is quantified but not clarified, there's going to be some further discussions as you all start selecting finishes. What grade of carpet are we going to put in? Material selections.
That's what I was getting at. Design is for brick? Is there some area where you use less brick, that kind of stuff? That's a decision that you're going to bring back to us at some point in time.
Exactly.
I don't think we need to, you know, look at everyone, but start talking $200,000 that we need to talk about.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and it goes back to your MEP systems, mechanical, electrical plumbing. Yes, we already know we're using VRF. Yes, we already know we're using LED, but which ones? You know, there's still a lot of design that needs to be hashed out in that.
Additional questions for President?
Kerry did give a brief update on schedule, so I won't go through every item that we've discussed here in the last maybe couple of meetings. But again, to reiterate, the cohesion with the design team has led us to a point where we're able to start construction before all of the construction documents are completed on the second high school. The, I think Pam was there for the local, and Jason for the local subcontractor summit back in September. We've engaged your local community, which is one of the promises we have promised you as the district is one of our number-one priorities in addition to keeping kids and faculty safe and delivering you a project on time and in budget, is ensuring that local subcontractors are engaged to the maximum extent to be able to work on these projects. So back on September 6th, we held a summit where I believe 60 companies were represented from the area. A lot of those companies came from your preferred vendor list provided by your people, and then we've further engaged in other folks beyond those lists since that time to ensure that once our bidding does start, that they are there, that they're ready, that they have the first information out of the gate. And all that information will be coming through the local newspaper, the Tribune. So the next milestone, I would state, instead of getting into the weeds of this, unless you would like to get into it, is really the first bid package will be coming out within the next couple of weeks. So we are planning to start mobilizing for clearing and grubbing on the second high school. So in the state of Missouri, we have to have 15 working days or three weeks to be able to have that work advertised publicly. And then we will then get bids on a bid day. So what I'm saying is a provisional bid day for site clearing and grubbing is at the end of November, where we will hold a public bid opening with all of the contractors that have bid on that. So we will read those numbers aloud, and then we go into a period for about three to five days where we descope those folks, ensure that the dollars are line up with the design documents. And then as a team, we agree that it is ex-subcontractor to take that work on to start sometime in December to start clearing those trees, getting that to a place for the civil team to start taking surveys early January, where they're actually out there. No trees are out there, and they're analyzing exactly what falls and what elevations are. So then we can finalize design documents for our earthwork in middle of January, to have those start going out to bid. So nothing has changed in relevance to bidding. Actually, we've just pulled about a month this way to start. That's our anticipation at this point for the second high school. Current high school is still geared up for sometime next summer. We're working alongside the design team as well as understanding from our code authorities and also fire marshal, et cetera, to try to understand getting those kids in, live work versus fire codes, et cetera, and doing all of those necessary investigations to help with schedule. So are there any questions with schedule? No? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Larry. I guess one question I have with the renovation on the existing high school. Will that have an impact on this coming summer for summer school? Will we be cutting back or moving it someplace else?
Okay, so we will have, there will be, we'll do, be doing some moving then. Okay.
I'd like to hear if we have any comments from the learning division, since I don't know how many times they've been through the presentation or meetings, but I'd sure like to hear from our chief of learning and our chief of secretary if they have any comments regarding the design before we leave that.
Brian, Gary, yeah?
No, in terms of the designs, we're perfectly fine with the process that we're using in terms of getting feedback from staff and ensuring that we're meeting the needs of the people who are going to be, you know, in those rooms and using those spaces. So we're perfectly satisfied with the process we're at right now in terms of making those decisions. Obviously, as they've stated tonight, we're not, no final decisions have been made. We're still in the process of gathering information from staff, but we're far enough down the line that we can at least show them, you know, the spaces and dimensions and some of the materials and start getting a little more specific feedback. So we're happier with where we're at in the process right now.
So what does that look like, guys, in terms of sharing that with the staff? Do you do that at specific building presentations or do you push an email out in-person presentation?
They've been in the building a couple of times. They've been in the design group, meeting with staff about what do you want the spaces to look like. So that's, a lot of that's been done. I think they're scheduling another one in about a month, Amber. And so we saw a lot of the open spaces. Really, the direction of teaching and learning is to get away from the stand and deliver. So you need different types of spaces to accommodate that type of learning. You know, we don't want to lose the art of teaching, but we also have to be flexible and know that the 2019 teaching staff will not be the same staff in 2024, five years, 10 years down the road. So it's meeting the likes and dislikes of current staff and meeting the, where it could be going beyond our time and our current capacities, but again, looking at what's going to garner the most student engagement and less stand and deliver and more engagement and in-depth learning.
Gary, I got a question. I know with the second high school, it's a little bit easier, you know, your wish list because you've got, it's a blank sheet right there. How's it going with the existing high school as to what are some of the wish lists?
Exact same process.
Okay.
Create some of those same open spaces where students can go out in small groups, whether it needs to be quiet or not as quiet, and whether it be two classes collaborating together. It's, the process is mirroring each other for existing and second.
Okay. I know we've not talked a whole lot about the Nichols Career Center. Will that be an area that we will be able to expand somewhat than what we have today?
We are gaining considerable square footage. Every program except two will be getting substantial more space. And those two that won't be, Sharon and I are working together to make those two staff members feel like they're gaining somewhere else. I've actually had more conversations with Nichols than I have probably the high schools, so you all may not have, but I have.
Well, I have too.
Pam has too, okay.
Yeah, that was a significant area of concern in the Long Lake Facility Planning Committee. We didn't really get answers then. I have a particular concern because it's my understanding, we have a backlog, we have a waiting list all the time for certain programs, and these are programs that teach valuable, high-paying skills that are in demand. And I just thus far don't see how, you know, I'm anxiously awaiting the design space, but what we gained when Lynn left, when Lynn State, Lynn Technical left, is not helping in our metal with our welding. It's, I don't see how it's going to help with automotive, and I just, I have some concerns with that area.
And we're going to do our best to make sure that we can best meet the needs of everybody. We, I'm not going to sit there and say, we're going to be able to accommodate every single thing they've requested, but the last meeting I had with Sharon Longan and the one or two staff members that she's relying on heavily to give feedback, they were elated. They were very pleased with the last where spaces are going to be and how much they're going to have.
Well, if they're elated, I'm good.
Okay.
I appreciate it. Kerry, Brian, you guys' efforts and meeting with us.
Absolutely.
I think Kerry way undersold when he said he's had 12 meetings with staff, because that's not like an hour meeting. Those are, some of those are days worth of meetings with...
Yeah, those are 12 days.
Well, I know you spent, certain students were selected, and you followed them through the entire day to see how they used office space, and I think that was helpful, and I presume you did something similar comparable for staff, so.
The DLR is also... And actually, what came out of that, frankly, was, you could probably explain this better than I could, how well they were doing with the limitations of the space they had. Does that work?
Yes, absolutely.
Very far ahead of the building there.
Actually, this picture here, I think, explains it best. I was shadowing a class, and they started out the class with a brief presentation, and then they broke into small groups. And you're seeing one group at the head of the classroom, working on solving a problem while there's another group, and there's a couple of students at back looking at individual work. So they're already doing amazing things in the spaces that they're in, and we're just trying to design more of those flexible spaces to accommodate what they're already doing.
Thank you.
I think that concludes the construction update agenda, I have...
I think so.
Very good. Well, thank you, guys. We certainly appreciate the members of the construction team being here this evening and providing us such, there's a lot of details to digest this evening, but good information, and we appreciate the amount of effort that you're putting into it. Certainly appreciate the clarity in which you provided it to us, and we're looking forward to continued work and more information to come.
Steve, I have one more thing just to bring real quick. So while we're here, part of construction is, we know we have to look at our boundaries, and so we would like to kick off our boundary committee, and so we'd like to put out advertisement for that starting tomorrow. And we'd like, what our plan is, is to reach out and try and get volunteers who would like to serve on this committee. And then, once we get those volunteers, we have a form all ready to go out. We want to pick a certain number from each elementary attendance area. We want to make sure we have a diverse group. This is going to be a really important committee. I've worked with the demographer, he's willing to help facilitate this. We already have some work that he's done, and so just kind of want your blessing for us to go ahead and move forward with advertising for that process starting tomorrow.
I have a question. Will this be a committee that is an advisory to the school board?
Absolutely.
Then it falls under sunshine, so it'll meet all the requirements of minutes and...
Absolutely, this would be open.
They would, from my understanding, they'd be open meetings, and their, the goal would be for them to provide a report, a set of recommendations for the board to consider and then potentially act upon.
If you were asking for an agenda item, that'd be a different deal, but if you're just asking for us to give our underlying consent, that might be something that we could give.
That's...
Yes.
Consent is fine.
I really just didn't want you to be surprised when we send out an ad tomorrow asking for volunteers.
I appreciate that.
No, I think that's, no, I think everyone's in agreement with that. I think we're fine.
I have a question.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jason. Okay, well, come to Agenda Five. Typically, we have a couple of folks that are well-known for making this motion. We look for motion to move it to closed session. Would someone care to make that?
Some motion to suspend open work session to enter into closed session by roll call vote pursuant to Chapter 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri, Section 13, individually identifiable personnel records, and 14 records which are protected from disclosure by law.
Make you a little while. Here, a second.
Scott?
Hi.
Thank you, folks. We'll take a 10-minute recess, we'll reconvene here.
So do I need to see Mr. Joe?
Did you get yours loaded?